And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good afternoon and welcome. We have interpretation services available today in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please raise her hand and introduce yourself in Espanol? Gracias. Today's proceedings are being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and Fios Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. Before we get started with today's interview, and for those of you that are just are still getting acquainted with our process, I want to once more extend a warm and heartfelt thanks to the members of the search committee, including our vice chair and the co-chair of the search, Ms. Alex Oliver-Davila, our other co-chair, Dr. J. Keith Motley, who's in the audience with us today, and Mr. O'Neil from the search committee and school committee as well, who have been carrying the load in this effort over the last eight months. The volunteers on the search committee have spent more than 70 hours in meetings during that time, and I think we might even want to bump that up to 80 at this point with the interviews over the last week. And that time includes six community forums, public meetings, and nearly 40 hours of confidential candidate interviews. This group has interviewed 12 individuals and invited back seven for a second round of interviews in order to come to the consensus on three finalists that we have before us today. So we're, again, deeply appreciative of the hard work that the search committee has taken on and brought us to where we are today. And speaking of today, the school committee is going to interview the final of our three candidates for the superintendent of the Boston Public Schools. I want to extend a warm welcome to Dr. Oscar Santos. Welcome today, doctor.
Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing from you in just a moment. And as many folks who have been reading the papers know, Dr. Santos is a BPS graduate and a former superintendent of the Randolph Public Schools, and he is currently president and head of school at Cathedral High School, excuse me, 712 School in the South End. So welcome once again.
Thank you.
Well, we're also giving thanks to the search committee members that have led us to this point. I also want to take one more opportunity to thank the 21 members of the interview panels that have given up their time in volunteering to help us out here this week as well. This group includes nine current BPS parents, three students, two teachers, two school leaders, our assistant superintendent for academic, excuse me, achievement gaps, and the city council's chair of the education subcommittee, among many other community partners from higher education nonprofits and the CBOs that help the district in its daily work serving kids. So I want to thank them for sharing their time perspective with us. I thank them for representing the BPS students, families, teachers, and community at large. And I also want to thank the Shaw Foundation once more for their financial support of the community process that has made this such a robust endeavor, not only this week but throughout the process. So moving on now to the business at hand, Dr. Santos, I'd invite you to give an opening statement, and then we'll have an opportunity to open up questions to questions from the members.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me here. Oscar Santos, it's a pleasure to be here. And just before we begin, I want to let you know a little bit about myself. As Mr. LaCanto said, I am a proud graduate of the Boston Public Schools. I grew up in the city of Boston. I learned how to cut my teeth here as a teacher in Boston, and I was also a principal. In those 14 years that I was in the Boston Public Schools, I taught English, I taught history, I taught college readiness, and I also worked with English language learners. I taught English language learners who were new to the country as well as students who taught ESL. I had the fortune of being a Boston Principal Fellow, which was a program that supported young leaders to become principals. And then I had the honor to serve as the headmaster at Boston International High School from 2004 to 2010. One of the things that I was proud of during that time was that I also was the founding member of the ELL Task Force chairperson as well as the co-chair for the Achievement Gap Opportunity. I spent three years in Randolph as superintendent, taking on a level four school district, and came back to the city of Boston where I'm now the president of an independent philanthropy-based school for inner-city kids. What I'm most proud of is being a husband for 20 years and having a wonderful son, Jackson, who's 16, and my daughter Sophia, who's 13. And I look forward to engaging in dialogue with you today.
Thank you very much, Dr. Santos. And before we begin, I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, and then I'll describe the process. So first question, have you had an opportunity, you're the third person that's gone through this process to date, have you had an opportunity to watch any of the previous interviews with other candidates?
I did not watch any of them.
Okay. Have you had any chance to talk with anyone else that might have had a chance to watch those videos and prepare you with any of the questions that you've heard?
Did not.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The process today is, we're going to go around and allow each of the members on the school committee that didn't play a role in the search committee process to ask you two questions apiece. And we'll go around and we'll start with each of those candidates, my fellow colleagues to engage in that process. And then we'll have Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Oliver-Davila, ask a few additional questions, as will I. And then if we have time remaining, we'll go around once again, and then we'll have an opportunity for you to give a closing statement at the end of the interview. Sound good?
Excellent.
All right. Well, I want to ask our student representative to lead us off, Ms. Evelyn Reyes.
Good afternoon. It's afternoon, right? Yes.
It is.
Good afternoon. As I'm sure you know, students in Boston were known for our organizing and our being, thank you, and our being proactive in terms of advocating for our education and making sure that we get the best and that our peers get the best. So I am curious to hear how you would support the priorities of our student-led organizations if chosen as superintendent.
Evelyn, one of the things that's most important is making sure that students are at the forefront of all decisions that I make as a school leader, as a superintendent. And one of the things that I think is wonderful about the student agency and BSAC is that you're working on all the right things. From my perspective, from what I've read, is making sure that there's student voice, that you're represented in the budget, that you also have opportunities to discuss academics and programs to support you to be more successful. I actually saw the app that was created, which I think was wonderful, and I think that's something that could be done for parents too, which is excellent. As a principal, one of the first things that I always did was, that made me successful, was to get to know my students. When I was a principal at Boston International High School, a headmaster, one of the things that we did was we transformed the school from a program into an accredited high school. And these were students who came to the country who were recently arrived immigrants. And the idea initially was that those students would then go to Boston International, learn some English, and go to another high school. The students did not want that, and that was the correct thing, so listening to students. Recently, we just created an applied learning center at Cathedral. And the first thing that we did was we asked the students, the kids who were living in it, what do you want the school to look like? What should it be like? And they were part of the design process with some of our partners who came from the outside Dell and Autodesk. So to answer your question, in terms of looking at voice, ownership, and making sure that the priorities that you have to have equity, to make sure that you're represented, that you have high academic classes, and that you have programs, I support that 100% Evelyn.
Thank you. I would ask, is there maybe some tactics that you have thought up that are more specific to like student organizations such as like Hyde Square Task Force, for example, I Have a Future, St. Stevens, things outside of BSAC?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that when I was a teacher at English High School, we also worked with Hyde Square Task Force to support students. When I got to Randolph, which was a broader school district, we had a support group for students that really had, we had what we call Coffee with the Superintendent, and it was to have the discussions about the issues that were going on. In a wonderful city like Boston, I think that there's a great opportunity to really sit down with students to talk about early colleges, to talk about high school redesign, to talk about how do we set up programs for kids to have opportunities that extend beyond their school day and internships and other programs to truly support them. I know that the PIC program does that, Hyde Square Task Force, as well as other internships and other programs. And those are the opportunities that I think exist.
Thank you. And I'm sure you're also very aware of this, but we have a very active community, parents and teachers and other education advocates who also look to make sure the district is serving our students in the best way. That being said, sometimes the community's priorities or vision for the district doesn't match up with the mayor's. And I'm curious to hear how you would mitigate those differences and how you would balance the mayor's priorities with those of the community.
In terms of the priorities, one of the things that's wonderful is that having different perspectives from parents, from students, from teachers are helpful because they help frame what are some of the needs that may not be happening, that people may not be, do not know. One of the things that I think is critical is to really listen to the people who are living in the schools. And as you mentioned, the students, the parents, the teachers, those are the critical conversations that help the people who are leading it, such as the mayor, the superintendent, central offices, have a better understanding of some of those, what I would say, points that are necessary, that are supportive for students. And then last but not least, it's about bringing people together. Because if we're not, schools are made to make sure that students are successful, the schools are for students. And if the students' voices are not represented, not heard, their thoughts and their ideas, then we're not really doing the right things to support their needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Dr. Rivera.
Hello, Dr. Santos. So I was very pleased to see that you were involved in the ELL Task Force for the Boston School Committee. I just became the new co-chair of the ELL Task Force. And so my question is really about supports for English language learners. And since you were, you know, there in the past before the recent LOOK Act has been passed, which now allows, you know, different alternatives for bilingual education beyond just sheltered English immersion. So I wanted you to say a little bit about, you know, first, what are the three biggest challenges facing English language learners in BPS today? You know, how does that differ from when you were involved with the ELL Task Force? And, oh gosh, I guess this is sort of a part B is, you know, so the three challenges facing English language learners, and then how the LOOK Act could be opportunities for our school district to get it right, to serve our students better.
Great. Lorna, there's a number of challenges with English language learners. I would say that the first challenge is really properly identifying English language learners. As you know, we have students who are long-term English language learners, and many of those students were born here in Boston and do not have academic language. We then also have students who are older English language learners. As you know, the fastest growing population coming to the city of Boston are immigrants. 61% of our new arrivals are immigrant students. So those are older English language learners. Some may come with native language, with good native language acquisition, and some may not. And then you have students who, I had the pleasure of teaching these students, students who come with what you call interrupted education, formal interrupted education, which are called SIF. I taught in that program. So I think it's really making sure that we properly identify our English language learners. That's the first critical piece. The second one is to make sure that we provide high-quality education that is grounded and aligned with the mass frameworks. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you water it down. It means that you provide the opportunities. Because one of the key things with working with English language learners is that you make the instruction theme-based so that you're working in a team, so that they're learning academic language in math, English in history, so that it's not just decompartmentalized. And that you're also building confidence, and that you're giving the students the opportunities to learn the language in context so that there's internships and opportunities for them to actually be able to build those skills. And then I think the last challenge is that when you look at English language learners, we need to really be a lot more proactive in terms of supporting students for graduation. If you have older English language learners, in some cases, you may have to really think about how do you partner with a community college because some of those students have to work. When I taught at English, when I taught at English High School, as well as when I was the headmaster at Boston International High School, we had students that had to work from 3:00 to 11:00. They were new to the country. They were from Somalia, Albania, Ethiopia, Eritrea. We were able on Saturdays at Boston International High School to provide classes for the students, and they really appreciated that. And I might go off a little bit here in terms of, again, supporting English language learners, but one of the things that I think is critical is that you also provide different pathways. We had early college pathways for our students at Boston International, and we also looked at how do you provide opportunities for students to have different pathways to success so that they're embedded in their work. So those are some of the challenges. In terms of the second part with the LOOK Act, I think that that's helpful because it allows schools to be a little bit more entrepreneurial, and it allows schools to have an opportunity to say, here are the needs of our students, and here's how we can work a little bit more explicitly with some of our partners. So a perfect example, you mentioned the Hyde Square Task Force. Perhaps students at English High School could work with mentors or partners from Hyde Square Task Force. And one of the ways that you could do that is maybe through relational automation. It's looking at creating app-based approaches to say, here are some things that kids need. Is there a tutor that wants to support them? So that it's connected. And then when you look at workforce development for English language learners is that there's students who really want to have that, what I would say, embedded work opportunities, and really thinking about how do we provide partnerships and opportunities for them to have those successes. So I do think that the LOOK Act does provide those opportunities to really differentiate and to build academic language for kids.
Thank you. Just one more question. So also, one of the challenges facing our district is the lack of teachers of color in our schools, where we're a majority-minority district, particularly teachers as well that can work with English learners and have that native and the cultural backgrounds as well. So I wonder if you could speak a little bit about, you know, we also have many programs to recruit teachers of color, but we don't do a good job of retaining them. So if you could say a little bit about what have been some effective approaches to recruiting and retaining teachers of color that you've been able to do in your experience?
Lorna, you're absolutely correct about the fact that we need more diversity in our classrooms. And I said this in the earlier panel, but I think it's important to mention this, is that diversity is good for all students. It's not just good for English language learners. It's not just good for African-American students. It's good for all students. And the reason for that is because it provides empathy. It provides examples of what the world really looks like, and it gives kids opportunities to really be more prepared for a multicultural world. So that's the first thing. The second thing that, in terms of the numbers that I look at, where 42% of our students are Latino and 34% of our students are African-American, it's, that's a high number, 76, that's what makes up Boston. And our African-American and Latino teachers are about 33%, so that's a big disparity, and it's something that we need to work on. One of the things that I think is critical is to also look into the number of teachers in the Boston Public Schools and staff that speak another language, because that really does support the work a lot, and that's something that I think we really need to look at. I had the fortune when I was the headmaster at Boston International High School to create open postings. And I don't know if those exist anymore, but open postings were job descriptions that you created based on the needs of your school. And I think that that's an important piece to be able to have. And in our open postings, we looked for teachers that were either from another country, because we knew that we had students from 35 different countries, or that the teachers spoke another language. And it was wonderful because we had teachers from Cape Verde, and there's a big difference between Fogo and Praia. And there's, you know, we had teachers from the Dominican Republic, and they understood the context that Bani is very different from La Capitan. So those were some of the things that I think really helped us out. We had Albanian teachers. So that's one of the ways that I think we really need to be strategic about catering our positions based on the needs of the students. And if students have those needs, we really need to be more directive and more proactive in addressing that type of open posting. In Randolph, I had a similar challenge where, when I arrived in Randolph, about 10% of our leadership team was diverse. By the time I left, we were 35%. And part of that was is to make sure that, we wanted to make sure that the faculty, that the leadership team reflected as much as possible of the community. And that also brought up a lot of support because families could then have conversations. Haitian families knew that there was somebody in the office that actually could speak Creole. And those things help families and students understand that you care. Last but not least, I do think we need to grow our programs. There was, a long time ago, I'm dating myself now, this goes back to 1998, we had a Teach Boston program, which was for young kids who wanted to be teachers. And I can tell you that it was a great program because some students now became teachers, and one of them is actually a principal, and I was part of that program. So growing your own is important. The Boston Principal Fellowship is a program that we grew also, that I came through. And I think that that's important, to have models that are educators to inspire our kids to want to be there. So those are some of the strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. Tran.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
In terms of equity, what does equity means to you? And what are the kind of guiding principles of your thought on equity that you would use, that you would implement or apply in developing budget school projects, educational programs? Very short question.
Sure, no problem. Equity is something that I learned as a young person at the Rafael Hernandez Elementary School. Equity to me means that you are treated with respect, that you're provided with support, that you have people that care about you, and people that are warm demanders who push you to be the best that you can be, and that they give you the resources and access to be as successful as you can. And that's on the fundamental level. In terms of looking at equity for a school and for a school district, it's about, to me, four levels of the academic excellence. Making sure that every single student has a high-quality, caring, responsible, and up-to-date teacher. Programs that kids have access to high-quality K-12, mass core programs that are in line with high expectations. That there's also resources to support students. And what I mean by resources is some of the social-emotional needs that students have. One of the reasons why I'm here today is because there were a lot of social-emotional needs at Rafael Hernandez when I was a young man. Those things are critical, where you have nurses and you have people that care about you. In terms of drawing up a budget and thinking about equity, it's about making sure that your core values are aligned and put in place. Say, these are the things that matter to us: equity, academic excellence, making sure that there's inclusiveness. And equity doesn't just extend beyond the students. It's also with the families and with the community. Because if you're equitable, that's part of a core value to make sure that that's how you live your life and how you make decisions.
Thank you. There are times controversies, incidents that affect the student, at certain school or the student body in general. And those are the kind of incidents that are overly, I would say, covert by the media. How do you, beyond the traditional scheme of resolving those kind of issues through the resources at the central office, what are the kind of support system, what are the kind of support structure that you would use in battle, better handling those kind of situations, and the after effect of it?
Two things. First of all, is that we know that we live in a world where things happen. And how you respond to them is really what determines whether you did it well or not, because that's the way the world works. Things happen where kids make it into an argument. There may be something that happens at a school. And the key to that is to take it on head-on, to be transparent, to be direct about it, to bring it back to the community and to address it. And in terms of media, there's something that you can put out and say, here's what happened, how we addressed it. That's fine. But it's bringing back the community to say, what are the issues? How do we learn from this? It's, when we talk about restorative justice for students, when there's an issue, it's about restorative justice for a community. Because things happen at a school, and it gives you a chance to be able to say, how do we address that, and how do we learn from it? I'll give you an example. When I was superintendent in Randolph, we had a young man who was arrested in front of the school. And that was something that really bothered me. And it was an incident that we needed to address, discuss, and come back and make sure that students understood that, you know, when things like that happen, kids don't feel safe. And that schools are places where you want to have safety, and you want to have a sense of people feeling that they belong and that they care, that people care about them. So there's the, what I would say, the public relations piece, but there's the human element of making sure that you make people whole and that you respect them and that you care about them and that you walk them through the process. And that, the best way to do that, Mr. Tran, to me, is as a superintendent, obviously you can't be everywhere, but you hire great teachers and principals and adults that help support that work because that becomes a fundamental value and a representation of you the person.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Ms. Robinson.
All right, thanks. Good afternoon.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. So I read with interest that at your current school that you've started an early childhood program or been part of starting early childhoods. Is that correct?
We have an early childhood program with two of our feeder schools, which we have a K-12 pathway. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So can you talk about your thoughts about early childhood, what you did in Randolph? And as you, I'm sure you're well aware, the mayor has made a new investment in getting to universal pre-K here. How, if you were superintendent, would you work to move that work forward across the city?
Ms. Robinson, that is near and dear and critical to me because the earlier we can help young people learn, get acclimated to school, and to have the resources that they need, the better off they are. There's a great study that was done on early literacy, which is actually the largest study ever done on early literacy, the Tennessee Star Project, looking at the impact that early literacy had on kids. And they followed these students for 13 years, and they had the high, some of the highest graduation rates in high school, college acceptance. So I believe it. It's important. It's critical. When I was in Randolph, one of the challenges that we had is we did not have a longer school day. Through negotiations, we made sure that we extended the school day for our students so that they could get science instruction and so that they could also get full-day kindergarten. So those were two things that were really important to me. In addition to that, we also hired elementary literacy and math teachers to support the students as much as possible. And then last but not least, we also looked at the after-school programs that we had, which was called Spring Board. We made sure that any of the after-school programs were connected to kids' needs and that we really focused on literacy and mathematics as much as possible. In terms of the work that we're doing right now with our pre-K through 12 college pathway, it's with St. Patrick's and Mission Grammar School. And the reason why we want to do that is to make sure that the kids have access as early as possible to build those fundamental literacy programs. And kudos to the city for doing the universal pre-K. And I know that it's going to require training and providers, but it's the right thing to do, and I fully support it 100%.
Right, thank you. Question about lessons, Lauren. You were in the district for a while. You've left the district to work in other places. And if you were to come back, what would you bring back? What would, who would you bring back in terms of yourself? What have you learned? How are you the same or different than when you left? And what have you learned in the outer world that you would want to come and implement?
So I've learned a lot. I left the Boston Public Schools in 2010. I loved my time here in Boston. During my 14 years here in Boston, I was here for some of, I think, some of the best things that happened in Boston. We got trained in workshop instruction. The instructional corps was something that we really cared about. We started to work with the Achievement Gap. We looked at how do we really support English language learners. And we started doing some of the early college things. Those are a lot of things that I took with me and implemented in Randolph. So those were wonderful things that I learned. Some of the things that I've learned along the way as I've transitioned in being a superintendent and also being a head of school, I've picked up a few tricks along the way. The first one is, as superintendent, is the critical importance of operational excellence. And what I mean by operational excellence is that you cannot have the quality learning and teaching and everything going on if you don't really have your facilities organized, people on time, breakfast ready for kids, transportation, all the critical things that disrupt a day for kids. So that's one of the things that I learned and paid really close attention to. In addition to that, I have really enjoyed my work as a president or head of school at Cathedral. And I raise about $4 million a year with a wonderful team. And the reason why we do that is because we want to give kids a great opportunity. These are Boston kids. 88% of our kids are on free and reduced lunch. 92% are non-white. They come from Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan. Raise about $14,000 to $15,000 per student. And we do that by working with businesses. We do that by doing the Adopt a Student Dinner and other programs. So fundraising is something that I've gotten much better at. and other programs. So fundraising is something that I've gotten much better at, but it's fundraising for the right purpose. And then it's also building programs. We have created an applied learning framework. We just completed a 15,000-square-foot building, which has a makerspace, theater, robotics. And those are things that I've learned along the way that I would love to bring to Boston, because I think some of our high schools obviously need some redesign, but it's about thinking about high schools differently. It's thinking about high schools as early college campuses, and giving kids opportunities to not have to just go to one school, because you're not going to be able to build a makerspace in every single school. It's thinking a little bit more strategically about how do we listen to, going back to your question, Evelyn, how do we listen to students in terms of their needs and finding programs that we can leverage throughout the city? So those are some of the things that I've learned. I would bring that back to Boston. My core focus, when I look at Boston, is One Boston, One Focus, Great Schools for All. And it's about building great schools, and they don't all need to be exactly the same, but they do need to have quality, and they need to have adults that care about them, and then programs that I've built along the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Coleman.
Great, good to see you again, Dr. Santos.
Nice to see you.
We're very excited about your application. This is a wonderful time for us, we hope for you. So my first question is, what is your thinking about what people call you the comprehensive schools or wraparound services in schools as a way of closing the opportunity gap? And another way to ask that question is, what are kind of the public, for you, are the public health strategies a city needs to implement to support the district's effort to close the achievement gap? So both wraparound schools, and how can the city be useful in bringing resources to bear for the success of our children?
Dr. Coleman, that to me is a fundamental core value. When we talk about One Boston and One Focus with great schools, it's not that everything happens at the school. The city of Boston is rich in resources, and I mentioned this earlier. We have 38 colleges in the Boston area, 138,000 students. We have 22 public libraries. We have boys and girls clubs. We have so many great programs. And part of that is to really look at them as opportunity zones. What are the ways, we have hospitals, how do we really look at the needs that schools have and support them within a structure that is built in to support that? You look at our med schools, you look at our schools of education, how do we look at some of the needs that students have that could be social and emotional, to really embed that into the work? And it would have to be systematic, and you'd have to have an entrepreneurial or an innovation director to make sure that those things are aligned. Boston has a lot of incredible resources, but it needs to be, what I would say, organized in a fashion that schools can really say, you know, here are the needs. We have an opportunity index, which I think is wonderful. It's to be able to say to principals, what does your opportunity index look like to address the achievement and social-emotional gaps? And then to have somebody, because principals can't do this every day, but then to have somebody be able to siphon that up and say, okay, here's what's needed at Cogman Square. How do we work with the Cogman Square Health Center to support all the schools that are there at that Common Square Alliance? So those are some of the, I think, systems and practices that need to be put in place, because in order for our city to succeed, it's not going to just happen just with the schools.
Thank you. So my next question, I have no memory, so I have to write it all down.
Sure.
In five, 10 years, for what will you be known? If you're superintendent of the district, what will you be known for?
Well, I'd like to be here five years where we're saying, wow, we have really made some incredible gains in making sure that our schools are effective, that kids are learning, that we have decreased and are on our way to eliminate the achievement and opportunity gaps by working with opportunity zones. I'd like to say that we have a focused strategy where everybody in the city of Boston understands that we are really a city that's working together, that there's a pledge that we have signed, businesses, schools, school leaders, saying, we are committed to addressing achievement gaps and equity, and here's how we're working on it, that we're building it together, that there's voice and ownership, that this isn't something that came from the superintendent or just came from the mayor or came from the school committee, but that it came from the city of Boston. And that people are looking at it saying, wow, that is a city that is committed to helping their kids succeed. Because we know that there's challenges in the city of Boston, but I will tell you that besides those challenges, the opportunities that we have far outweigh it. Because we have, I believe, the human capital and the desire to make it a true opportunity to learn district and city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Dr. Santos. We've known each other a long time.
Yes.
It's a benefit of being on the school committee a long time, I guess. I remember walking Binka with the halls of Binka when you were in the old building, and finding out at that time that we shared alma maters in high school and college levels.
That's correct.
So nice to see how your career has progressed. No question in my mind, you know this city well, you have great experience with the district, and you've run, you've been both a teacher and a very successful school leader. So my question isn't around that, those are givens to me. I'm really focused in on superintendent schools of Boston. 128 schools, one point, close to a $1.2 billion budget, 56,000 students, over 10,000 employees, big jumps, big numbers, right? So first of all, let's talk the budget a little bit, because you have been a superintendent of a district, right? So you've had to put together a budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right now, at least in Boston, and we can compare this to Randolph as well, right now in Boston, the percentage of students or number of students who are living in poverty has actually declined this year, believe it or not, and at a greater percent than the federal numbers. So it looks, as you well know, those numbers are used for Title I and so on and so forth. So if we're level, that'll be great, more likely it's going to decline. The executive proposal on the federal budget is to totally eliminate Title II. You know, so we have some challenges on federal funding. The state money has, if the Promise Act doesn't pass, the state money will continue to decline. We're down to about 4% of our budget, and I think the city is projecting within two years it's going to flip, that the city is actually paying out more to charters than they receive in. So the burden's going to be completely on Boston. So let's talk about the challenges of working through a budget as superintendent. And if you want to reflect on some of your experiences in Randolph and putting together a budget, particularly more regards the federal and state funding, and how you would approach that in Boston as superintendent at a, you know, pretty high number.
As we all know, the budget is your clearest indication of your core values. What you spend your money on is what you value more than anything else. And that's important. That's the fundamental beginning of how you build a budget. It's looking at what are our needs and how do we make that decision? So looking at that, obviously, you need to have voices of the principals, of the parents, the site councils, so that you can have priorities about what happens at the school, so that you could bring that together, because it needs to be a budget that's owned for the entire city. In terms of the challenges with Title I and Title II, those are challenges that, based on the numbers, it's going to be difficult to try to recuperate some of those numbers if the numbers are going down. I think it's to be able to explain to the legislature and to make a case statement to the business community and as well as to the state, that while that may be the case, the cost of living in Boston is through the roof. And that is, it's really difficult, because you look at places like East Boston, you look at Dorchester, some of the hottest real estate markets where people are moving out. The real question is, why is our poverty going down when the economy continues to hurt some of our most distressed people? When you look at the color of wealth in the city of Boston, African-Americans have a net income of about $700, Latinos about $2,000. So I'm wondering what is happening, is that our city is losing some of our prized Bostonians who grew up in Boston, who may not be able to live in Boston anymore, because it's getting so expensive? So I think that's important to make sure that we find out the why on that. In terms of the Promise Act and the challenge that we have with what I would say, the charter schools, is that from my understanding, we were, about $220 million were designated to Boston, and 167 million have to go to the charter schools, which is difficult. And I understand choice, and I believe that all families should have choice, but I think Preston Green, one of the foremost people in terms of looking at charters and the economics of charters from the University of Connecticut, really articulates the point that you really have to support the public schools before you can even get into the charters, because then you're building a bridge where there's not going to be enough money for either one of the programs. So I think that's really difficult. And then last but not least, my job as a superintendent is to be the top advocate at the state level, at the city level, at the district level, to really find those resources, because we know that things are getting more expensive, and we have to support our students. We had that challenge in Randolph, where we had to go gather more resources. You know, we'd lost money to charter schools, we lost challenges. We went out, we got money from the Nellie May Foundation, we got a federal grant that was worth $1.6 million to make sure that we had social workers at every elementary school. So part of it is to be proactive, to look at the needs. And all of us know this, when you're creating a budget, it's not just a one-year budget. You're looking at a strategy. Where do we want to be five years from now? And how do we start incurring resources over time and human capital to support that work? So that's the way that I would go about that, Mr. O'Neill.
So I understand what you're saying, Dr. Santos, about a budget is reflection of values, and that we should pull together one that the whole city can get behind. But at the end of the day, and you probably know, in this city, we have, every year our budget goes up, and yet every year we have additional requests. And we have to make some really hard decisions. In the past year, we've worked with the city to have more school nurses, have more school psychologists. You know, we have a lot going on with our facilities. So I understand what you're saying, if it's a reflection of values. But help me how you make difficult decisions.
In terms of how I make difficult decisions, what I look at is what's in the best interest of students. And if we know that students need those supports, then it's incumbent upon myself, the city, and the community to really build different avenues to either look at, you know, reallocating resources, looking at perhaps redesigning some of our schools to make sure that there's more cost efficiencies. It's looking at all the challenges of your resources and saying, in order to support the students that we have in front of us, here are some of the resources that we may have to reallocate or redistribute. I can't tell you that I'm close enough to tell you that I would do this and that right this way, but yes, I would have to make some of those tough decisions. And I would lean on the school committee as well as some of the people who institutionally have a good sense of some of the things that are in place right now to make those assessments, because you need to have the data to make those tough decisions. But I would make those tough decisions to make sure that we have the resources for students.
Thank you, Dr. Santos. Mr. Chair, I did have a second question, but I know I asked a follow-up to the first, so I'll defer to my colleagues and circle back around.
We have plenty of time, please continue.
We do, okay. And thank you. So, Dr. Santos, as we think about the applicability of your experience, particularly at Randolph, because that's, you were superintendent of the district.
Yep.
Obviously, let's not talk about size, let's not talk about diversity. There was a lot of diversity in the student body in Randolph. The size was a lot smaller. But that's where you were superintendent. So help me out with three things, three lessons learned as superintendent of Randolph that you think have helped prepare you to be superintendent of Boston. And there could have been challenges, you know, maybe it didn't go so well, but what are the lessons learned from having been a superintendent once that feel prepare you for this position?
A couple. The first one is, when I assumed leadership in Randolph, we were a Level Four school district that was about to be taken over by the state. And you had to act right away. The four challenges that were presented was that we did not have curriculum K through 12. We had to take that on right away. We aligned the curriculum, got in line with the mass core, and built that out with the entire teachers' union. The second thing that was a great learning lesson was the fact that we were also cited for not supporting special education students. In many ways, what we had was exclusion versus inclusion. And what I mean by that is that we were doing it on a compliance base where at the schools, kids were getting some of the services, but they were not in a least-restrictive environment where they would be supported. That was something that I've learned, and was important, to make sure that you build an inclusive school district, and that you really provide the training with universal design, and you build out the pathways for students. And there was a lot of growth in that. The other thing that I learned that I think is really critical in Randolph is that you have to build alliances, that you cannot do it by yourself. That's a critical piece. The town manager and I worked very closely together. That's something that I think is similar in this regard to a mayor. The town manager and I met every single week, we had similar agenda, we had the same goals, we worked very closely together, and we problem-solved, and we addressed challenges and opportunities. So those are some of the things that I've learned, that I think can help me. But in terms of looking at leadership, it was the thing that I think I would bring with me the most is how to get a central office to be responsive to schools. That is probably what I am most proud of, and I will tell you how I did that. There's three types of data. There's count data, and you can look at the numbers. There's hear data, and you can talk to people. But there's see data, what is actually going on at the schools. And what we realized was that the central offices were telling people at the schools, here's what you need to do. I didn't agree with that. I said, let's make sure we all go visit the schools, the special ed director, the ELL director, math director. Let's make sure that we all do learning walks, that we calibrate the learning, and that we build plans to support the schools based on the needs of the schools. The people that are living it are the people that know it the best. And our job as a central office is to make sure that we support the people that are living it. And that's something that I would bring with me to Boston right away, because the unit of change happens at the school. Whether it's one school, six schools, 10 schools, 15 schools, 125 schools, it's about making sure that you have great leaders, that they know that there's support that is there, and that they have the resources to help them build that out with a central office, but that they also need to build that capacity themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. If I share, Oliver Davila.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, Dr. Santos, my question is dovetailing a little bit on Mr. O'Neill's question. He laid out for you some of the challenges on state funding and declining enrollment. I'm curious your thoughts around, so as, I'm sure you read the paper or watched some of our meetings, if you so choose to torture yourself watching our long meetings, you will, you know, you will see a lot of testimony where we hear from family, community, teachers, administrators, the whole gamut, two different takes. And one of them is, we need to have all of these basic and above services for schools, and we should keep all of our schools. And then the other piece that we hear about is, we need to right-size our district. So I'm just wondering if you can tell me your thoughts around those positions? And then just, you know, coming in, how you would kind of tackle it, and I have another part to that question, but I'm just wondering your thoughts around those kind of different positions?
Sure. So the challenges are real, and I have watched some of the meetings, so I've heard them. And I do live, I spend most of my time in the city of Boston, so I have a good sense and have friends that are in the Boston Public Schools. So I have a good sense, family too. In terms of the idea of a school and what the basic needs are of a school, there's something that I would be uncompromising about, is that schools need to have adults that care, that are prepared, and that are supporting students. That's a core value, that's about academic excellence, that's about equity, and that's something that we have to push for. That, to me, is what I would consider the basic, that there are caring adults who support kids, who push kids to be their best selves, and are willing to do the work. That may be a big basic, but that's my basic. In terms of when you get to that basic, when you're talking about schools that want to do more and go beyond, I believe that schools need to be, again, entrepreneurial. I'll take, for example, the high schools, the high school redesign work that needs to happen. I would say that high schools, every single high school, and I think every single high school headmaster would agree with it, I know some of these people, that we need to have the mass core so that kids can have the fundamental skills to be successful to graduate from high school. The second piece is then to think about, how do we recreate the needs that we have to make them better? And how do we leverage businesses and the outside resources and the greater community to create some of those opportunity zones that I think are so critical? If you look at Benjamin Franklin Institute, Roxbury Community College, Northeastern, having what I would say, early college and dual enrollment programs for our kids, that may allow us to have different setups to redistribute some of the needs. And I also do believe that we need the students and the families to have this conversation about what do we want our schools to be and look like and feel like? They don't all have to be exactly the same. And we need to really think about, how do we operationalize our high schools to be almost kind of like early colleges and destination spaces so that they could be campuses, where kids may be able to go take robotics at Madison Park, because they built an amazing fabric- amazing fabrication lab. But that can't happen at Brighton High School, because Brighton High School has a wonderful writing lab. And so, those are some of the things that I think we need to think differently about, and we need to really be more forefronting. And what I would say, again, you know, strategic in terms of the needs and how we right-size the district. Right-size, to me, is, is, it's more so than right-sizing. I think it's, it's academically sizing the district. I think right-size almost feels like a mathematical issue, which I think we can do that, but I think it's an academic, it's academic sizing. So, what are, what are the academic frameworks and needs that we need to make sure that then we can right-size?
My other question is, if you can talk and, and give us a specific experience from your past around something that was very challenging for the community? And if you can talk about, so, let me go back, sorry. We know that, that one of the struggles that we hear constantly is our community being effective community relations communicators. That we're not effective in our communication to the community. So, if you can talk specifically so we can get a sense of how you actually work with community, in the community, to make sure that all voices are heard? And if you can give a specific example from your past of something, again, challenging that you had to work on and that you were able to, to come to some place where you could move forward? Sorry, that was a long process.
I could come up with two. I'll, I'll give you one that is academic and then one that's more, what I would say, community-related. One of the challenging things that we had to do was, we had to, our schools in Randolph were all K-6 schools, and we did not have enough space because the elementary growth was too high at the, at the elementary schools. And we had to move the sixth grade to the middle school. And while that may not seem like a big deal, it was, it was difficult for, for elementary schools to say, okay, all of our kids are going to go over to the middle school now and be a 6th through 8th middle school. And the reason why that was challenging was because families, like anything else, were all creatures of habit. We have an understanding of how things work. We do it, we're good with it, we follow up. And that was difficult because it required bringing together four different schools, and it required bringing all the principals together to make sure that you had one common voice about, here were the challenges, here were the needs, here were the opportunities. And we also had to include the teachers' union, we worked with the parent councils, we worked with the school committee. Ultimately, we were able to do it because it allowed us to increase our academic program, it allowed us to extend the day, but it was not something that was done over one meeting. Anytime you have to do that type of work, you have to bring people together, and that was not an easy, not an easy process for us. So, that, that's one. Another one that was, something that I, I think was important was, we had an incident at Randolph High School where a, two young ladies got into a pretty bad issue, and we had to had a, a community forum on safety. And part of it was to make sure that you are able to hear the families, to hear their concerns, and to address it, and to be able to say, look, this is something that did happen, this is something that the principal's working on, and this is something that the district is committed to supporting also. We had a great director of family and community engagement that really worked with the families. We had not just a communication plan, but more importantly, a process to help support people, to say, what are the issues and what are your concerns? Those are things that I think you have to be proactive about. It's not always about good news. It's sometimes dealing with things that are difficult and challenging. And one of the things about leadership that I think is important is being able to deliver bad news in a way that people can at least understand it. They may not like it, but they have to understand that these were the issues, and this is how the community's working on it to, to help resolve that.
And just in your examples, you mentioned family.
Yes.
What was the role of the, the rest of the community within, in those examples? Did they play a role?
Oh, definitely. So, the town manager and myself were, worked closely together, the, the school committee, we had the interfaith alliance working with us. When you look, again, and this is, it's different, because Randolph's a small town versus Boston, which is huge. It's, you know, one or two things can bring, you can get 25 people together in a room or 30 people together in a room, which is a wonderful thing. But, but it is critical to make sure that the community is always involved, because schools are not just about the classroom, they really are communities. And it's, it's about making sure that the, the entire community is a part of that process.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Excuse me, Dr. Santos, good afternoon once again. So, I want to be brief, because I want to be able to go around once again with my fellow colleagues, and we'll start on Ms. Robinson's side of the table when I'm, I'm done with a question. But touched upon a number of issues that I think are important to the district. It's lucky when you're the seventh or eighth to go in a series of wonderful questioners that, you know, a lot of the good ones are very unasked. But I think I want to focus in a little bit on, you know, the big-ticket items that come with a, running a big-city school district. And union negotiations are tip, are certainly one of those. So, I've heard you mention your work with the, the union in Randolph a few times. I noticed on your resume that you sat at the table when you were working for BPS back in the 2000s. Tell me what your approach is to union negotiations? How do you work with the union particularly, but not necessarily limited to the teachers, to affect the changes that are necessary in order to keep a system running in an efficient way?
Michael, when you, when you talk about unions, it, it begins at the building level. One of the things that I pride myself on is, as a principal, to work with your building union reps and to make sure that you have constant meetings with them. We had a wonderful union rep when I was the headmaster at Boston International High School. And any of the challenges and issues that we did, we tried to, and I think this is important when you're meeting with people, when you have especially union-related things, is that you're proactive, and that, that you're saying, what are some of the things that are coming up? What are some of the things that we can work on? For example, we created a Saturday Academy. And that was not something that, you know, people are going to say, hey, check off, that's okay. So, you had to work with the union and say, listen, we're doing a Saturday Academy because our kids work from 3:00 to 11:00, they want to come in, we have a stipend, we can work this out. So, those are some of the little things that I think work. I think it's important to have good building principles to, to support that work. In my negotiations, working with the Randolph Teachers Union, I really enjoyed them. And for two reasons. Number one, because I was a teacher and I was a principal. And being a teacher, whether people realize it or not, it's the hardest job in the world when done well, and it's still the hardest job in the world when it's not done well. It's tough. So, you know, it just is a difficult job. And to me, I've always respected teachers, and when you look at the concerns, when we created our District Accelerated Plan, there was a lot of professional development that needed to go in, there were a lot of things that needed to be placed in. And we asked the teachers, what are your goals too? So, it's really being collaborative, it's being constructive, it's being strategic, and looking at it as a true win-win. And what I mean by win-win is, is that you're helping give the teachers the resources they need because they want to succeed, but you know that you have to work through teachers to make sure that kids are learning. So, that's the approach that I've used with unions, and it's an approach that I think is, is critical, because it creates the energy and the support that you need to get buy-in, to, to do the work, the important work that needs to happen to educate kids.
Very good. And one other thing I wanted to touch upon, we really haven't talked much about our students with special needs in the district today. So, I'm interested to hear what your experience has been with making sure that we provide for some of the highest-needs students in the district, and what your experience has been both in the district as well as in your work in Randolph and Cathedral as well.
When you look at special education students in Boston, right now, it's 21% of our students are special ed students, and that's something that we need to really be cognizant of, and it's to really look at, are the students fully inclusive? Are they restricted? You know, is it a .6, is it a .8? And to really look at designations of, of the student needs, and I think that that's really important. I'm a firm believer in least restrictive environment as much as possible. And what I can tell you is, is that, and I think I mentioned this when we were, when I was trying to answer Mr. O'Neil's question, and maybe I didn't do it so well, my apologies on that one, is looking at special education as a, a right and responsibility of a district, that you should not exclude kids, and that you need to provide them those, those opportunities. That was one of the big, biggest challenges that we had in Randolph. And the way that I approached it was to really address this with the Special Education Director and say, please show me the data, and show me how this is working. And again, going back to doing the district walks, bringing the central offices with you and saying, okay, how is this helping students when they're not actually in the classroom, getting the things that are being taught? And then they're supposed to be tested or given those opportunities? That was something that you needed to build a coalition to say, okay, that makes, that didn't work. And then bringing that back to have a conversation with the principals, so that the principals understood, here, here's what we need, and here are some of the things that we need to put in place. So, when I look at working with students who are special education students, it's, it's important to make sure that you support them and that you identify them well. One of the other things that I think was critical in Randolph was when we hired assistant principals to do the identification for our younger students and our special education when kids were enrolled. We had kids who were coming into kindergarten who were already being identified as special education students. And I said, I can't understand that if this is a student who hasn't had a, at the kindergarten level, you're not supposed to be learning yet. So, is this a behavioral issue, or is this a, are we identifying students in the wrong manner? So, I think that that's really important, to make sure that you have those safeguards early on, and that you provide those resources all the way throughout.
Thank you, Dr. Santos. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. As you well know, we are a district of autonomous schools. We have lots of diversity in terms of who our schools are and what they provide. We also have a major goal of closing opportunity and achievement gaps. How do you, how would you structure a central office to provide supports to this variety of schools, but at the same time, move ahead in really actually closing gaps?
So, two things that I think are, are critical is, is that, to me, an autonomous school needs to be an entrepreneurial school versus just an autonomous school. And, and here's what I mean by that, is, is that you have to be able to say, here are the core fundamentals that we're going to focus on. The mass framework is a great framework, that's something that is a state standard. Let's use that to help support us. What are the next things that we're going to do so that when we're doing, if it's at an elementary school, if we're doing literacy with regrouping and reorganizing the classes and making our block longer, that's fine. That's a school-based decision that needs to be made, but you're looking at the goals and the objectives that are organized for the district, so that you're looking at growth for kids. So, I think it's important to give schools the flexibility and the resources that they need, but they also need to be intentional about having the core fundamentals of, here is what we're going to make sure that kids know and are able to do in a way that's, can be measured and organized, so that you can really have data to support that work. And part of that is, is, again, I'm a big supporter of workshop instruction. I love workshop instruction, the I do, you do, we do. All of us know this, is that kids learn more when they're doing certain things. I'll give you a, a perfect example. If I'm lecturing you, you're probably getting 5%. If you're reading it, you're going to get about 10%. If I give you a visual, you're going to get 20%. But if you have a discussion with your colleagues, you're going to get about 50% of it. But here's the kicker, when you decide that you're going to practice by doing, you're 75% more likely to learn it. And when you're able to teach others, you're about 90% able to learn it. So, part of that is, is to be able to say, here's our framework. We want to make sure that kids are learning and doing and applying. And that is, whether it's workshop, whether it's differentiated, whether it's an applied model, that's what we want to see, because we know that that's a good practice. That helps us close the achievement gap. Secondly, we want to make sure that when we're looking at the achievement gap, that we are real critical about the fact that, what are the gaps? Is it that the student can't read? Is it that he cannot decode? Is it that she cannot write effectively? So, that you need to have that data, so that you can bring that down at the teacher level and at the school level to do problems of practice. There's a, there's a great framework, and I don't want to get too academic here, but it's, it's called the Wallace Framework for District-Wide Change. Really, what you do is you look at, what are kids doing? What's the evidence? Are kids doing this, not doing this? Then it goes to the principal. Based on what the student can't do, here's what the principal needs to do. Pretty important. Here's what the principal needs to do to make sure that she can support it, it needs to go back to the district. So, that it goes student, teacher, principal, and then it goes back to the district. And the district's approach is, is to make sure that there's enough data to say, here's how we're helping the school grow. And that's how, you have to be intentional about closing that achievement and opportunity gap.
Thank you. Can I follow this?
Please.
So, tell me a little bit, but how would you organize central office to make these supports happen?
Yeah. So, so, Ms. Robinson, I, I'd have to get a sense of who's here. I mean, I can, I've looked at the org chart and, and those types of things, but here's the way that you do it. From September to December, I will give you my word, central offices will be visiting schools with me, because I love being in schools, making sure that we have a sense of what's going on at the school. That's the special ed director, that's the ELL director, whether we have content directors, you know, the chief academic officer. It's really being able to do those learning walks. That's what we did in Randolph. And then we calibrate the learning, and we create dashboards with the kids, with the, excuse me, with the kids, with the team, saying, okay, if here's what we're looking for, and here's where the achievement levels are, let's make sure we support that. And by the way, there's some schools that are doing some amazing things. There's some schools that may be at green right now, and we need to use those schools as, as bright spots, and say, let's go over to the Gardner School, where they're doing so many wonderful things with social-emotional learning. Let's go over to the Elliott School, where they're already implementing some of the STEM programs. You know, let's look at how the Burke is really closing the achievement gap for African-American and Latino boys. So, there's some models that you can already look at and build that out, so that, that central offices can also see examples of things that are working.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Dr. Coleman?
Great, thank you. In 2019, how do you think a focus on racial and economic integration in schools is a relevant strategy for closing the achievement gap?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
And how do you think racial and economic integration in schools, focus on that, is a relevant strategy for closing the achievement gap?
In, in the city of Boston, it, it's everything. It's absolutely critical. In, in terms of looking at what I would say, human capital and integration of students and having opportunities for students to be as integrated as possible, that's the only way that, I, I believe, that's one of the ultimate strategies, to close achievement gaps and opportunity gaps. Because you're allowing, and you're building pathways for families and students and people in the community to really have cross-functioning relationships. Sometimes you may have a neighbor that you never see, and that's not good. And, you know, when you, when you look at racial inequality in the city of Boston, you know, you look at, unfortunately, let's just say, a place like West Roxbury versus Roxbury. They both have the word Roxbury in them, but they're very different. You know, you look at East Boston and you look at Dorchester. How you speak to Latinos in Dorchester, who are primarily Dominican and Puerto Rican, versus how you speak to Latinos in East Boston, who are primarily from El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, it's a very different approach. So, you know, and I've said this before, and, but I, I truly believe it, is that culture eats strategy every single day. You have to know the city of Boston, and part of one of the challenges that we've had in the city of Boston is, is that it has not been an equitable city in, in many ways. And, and I think that the schools of the, the public schools are the grounds to be able to bridge those divides. And we have to equip our principals and our school leaders and our central offices to make sure that we have those conversations, that we build that capacity. Some of that work was, I believe it's being done now, because I read some of the work that's being done with the achievement gap, which is excellent. I know that when I was in Boston, we were working on that with Glenn Singleton's Difficult Conversations, we were working on Geneva Gay's culturally-relevant teaching, we were working on Glenn, again, you know, the courageous conversations. Those are some of the things that we need to equip our teachers with, to make sure that those conversations happen at the school level, because those are real issues.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I'm going to go to our student representative, Ms. Al Reyes, for another question.
Excuse me. So, BSAC, along with other parents and community members, helped push for changes in the BPS Code of Conduct a couple of years back. And the goal of that was to ensure that students would not be excluded from their own education for minor disciplinary infractions. And as a result, schools are required to explore non-exclusionary options for suspension, or when a suspension is considered. Along those lines, I would like you to share what you know and understand about the school-to-prison pipeline and what experience you have working to address that issue.
Evelyn, thank you for your question. This is not something that I've just read in a book, it's something that I've lived. I grew up in Uplands Corner on Columbia Road, and I, and I know friends who unfortunately have ended up in jail.
have ended up in jail. I have friends who did not finish school because they got into a fight or something happened in school. So it's something that I have constantly, my entire career, have been 100% against. I know a lot about it because we know the facts. If a kid is suspended from school, they're three times more likely to drop out. If a kid is expelled from school, they're seven or eight times more likely to get arrested. That's not what schools are built for and that's not what I believe. So it's something that I am 100% against. I understand that kids may get into problems. I understand the law. If there's a weapon or if there's a controlled substance, yes, you call the police. If not, you don't. I had to deal with that a lot in, in the Randolph Public Schools. As a teacher, I dealt with this at English High School and something that I mentioned earlier to the earlier panel, we had a group of students who were more, the most likely students to be suspended. We started a young men's program and I can tell you that all of those young men graduated from high school. Myself and two other student teachers worked with them for two years. And we also made sure, those students also did a, they also put together a basketball tournament and gave all the money back to a battered shelter deployment. We gave them the opportunity to show their assets and who they were and they wanted to give back to the community. I didn't, I don't have that many, those types of issues at Cathedral as much and I'll tell you why. It's not that we don't have kids that have those challenges. Cathedral has an amazing model. The model is called the Planning Center. It's proactive. If any student ever feels that he or she doesn't feel safe, there's a problem, they have somebody to go to. That's not a model that I created, that's a model that I inherited. That's something I would bring with me to Boston because it's great. Our kids are living in trauma. We have kids who live in tough neighborhoods and then we expect them to show up to school and it's 7:45 and put a smile on your face and learn. That doesn't happen that way when you have challenges at home or in your community and certain things like that. And this is not a, something that you say teachers need to fix. It's something that you need to really be cognizant of because that impacts culture. So it's something that I'm very familiar with. It's something that I have always fought against and it's something that as a superintendent, I would make sure that we have kids in schools as much as possible because that's what we, that's where we need them. We need them to be engaged, we need them to be a part of learning and building up their passion so that they can be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rayes. Dr. Rivera.
So I, I noticed that in 2002, you were awarded the Teacher of the Year, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I was hoping you could share a classroom story as a former public school teacher that has stayed with you and tell us how that has shaped you.
Oh, there's so many.
I'm sure there are.
There are, and I'll give you one that really humbled me that I will never forget. And I will not mention the student's name because it's, it's not appropriate, but it's actually not one of my best moments, but it's one of the best learning moments. I pride myself on really being prepared, organized and, you know, having great lessons. And we asked the students to, and we did a lot of work on this, to really look at a person who's a hero, a person who's been a leader, who has done some amazing things and, and why that person is a hero and a leader and, and why you wanna be that person. And it was a character analysis. And I was very upset with a student whom I really respected a lot. And, and I said, why didn't you do your work? And he looked at me and I will never forget this, and he said, you know what, your life's a little easy sometimes. He said, after I left here, I had to work from 3:00 to 11:00 and then I had to take my mother to the airport. And I, I got there at 4:00 and I didn't sleep to be here in your class. He said, the reason why I didn't do it, Dr. Santos, is I respect you very much, but, but I have, I, I had some things that I had to do. And I'll tell you why that makes me a Teacher of the Year because I really will never forget that and I'll never forget the challenges that kids have sometimes, that sometimes we give kids assignments and we tell them to do certain things like that. And that young man came back and I gotta tell you, and I'm really proud of this, the paper he wrote was about me. So, so you know, I called him out, I was honest with him because I'm not easy on kids, not easy in a bad way because I expected him to do it. But you know, he was able to say that and give me that back and it was just great for me because it reminds you the power that you have and that you need to have high expectations, but that you have to listen. And I'll never forget that young man and we're, we're still pretty close. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Dr. Santos, thank you for sharing that story, by the way. I, I'm listening to you talk about that and I'm harkening back the first time I walked into a class time, a classroom with you in Binkner. And you were pointing out many different nations represented in one classroom. And that was eye-opening for me, something I've never forgotten and it's why I think I've always valued the work going on at Binkner. It brings me though to an issue that you've discussed several times today, which is mass core. You've, you've returned to that three, four, maybe five times.
Yeah.
And in particular, one time you said, you know, every school leader I've talked to in Boston wants mass core. And I was a little surprised by that because, for a couple of reasons. One, as Ms. Robinson pointed out, I think actually the figure is 40% of our schools have a levels of autonomy. Second of all, it's easy to say we should move to mass core, but there's a lot of concern about that, both the repercussions, and I'm interested in what you think the repercussions of that would be, and how you would work through that as superintendent if in fact, it sounds like you, it's a firm belief of yours, we should, every high school should be requiring mass core. So could you talk to that in a little bit more detail, please?
Yes, I would talk to that in, in more detail. And to me, here's, here's the data. If a student has high-quality classes, curriculum, they're more prepared to be successful in high school. And that's, to me, the mass core where kids have four years of mathematics, four years, those are the, those are core principles to make sure that kids are able to graduate, to be able to go to a four-year college. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that everybody needs to go to a four-year college, but we want kids to be able to have those standards. Working with school leaders is to say, if we want success for our kids and we know that in the city of Boston, to be able to get any job today based, based on the wealth gap in Boston, you need to have an associate's degree. 50% of jobs in Boston, you need to have a minimum of an associate's degree to get a job in Boston today. If we are preparing our students to really go into the workforce and we want them to go into the workforce, here's a plan. Here's some things that can help them. Now, it doesn't mean that everybody stop doing everything you're doing and here's what you're gonna do. It's just that you work with schools to get a sense of where are you, what are the needs, what are the challenges, how do we help you get there? Because that's helpful for students and it's working with people. It's not dictating, it's about ownership and bringing the headmasters together to support that work. The second thing is, is that we know that when kids are in school 94% of the time, they have a 2.7 GPA and they actually have workforce development opportunities, they're three times more likely to graduate from college. So those are some things that I think are important to lead with some, some of the facts, which I think are important. And then to talk a little bit about if we're not doing that, what are we doing and how is that helping us? And maybe there's some different approaches, but I, and I believe this, I believe that there's schools that are even doing more than that. But part of it is, is to engage people in dialogue, to get a sense of where they are. But that to me, it truly, it is, it's a, it's a fundamental because you really wanna make sure that kids have the skills to succeed. I don't know what the gaps are to not get there, but I think that that's important, especially looking at the Parthenon Report, the Bellwether Report that indicates that a lot of our kids end up going to college and unfortunately don't graduate or are not as successful. Now, it may not just be the mass core, and believe me, I'm not trying to make a correlation that that's the only thing. But I think that there's at least enough indication to give us a sense that when you prepare students academically, they're more likely to be successful.
I'm, I'm on board with that. I'm struggling with when we have 40% of schools that are autonomous that have their own boards.
Yeah.
It's a little difficult for the superintendent to say, you're gonna follow this, particularly when you have school leaders who will push back and say, well, in fact, mass core includes, and I'm being, I don't have the specific amounts, but probably no better than I do, two years of phys ed and I'd rather have arts and so on and so forth, so I'm not following an arbitrary standard. We're an independent board, like you are at Cathedral.
Yeah.
One school, one board.
Sure.
We set our own standards on what we're trying to do for our youth.
Yeah, and I, and I think that that gives you the opportunity to have dialogue with teachers because I'll give you an example. We have students from the Boston Ballet who are professional ballet dancers at Cathedral. That requires, they meet their physical education requirement by far. So I think part of it is, again, it's not saying it has to be done exactly like this. I'll give you an example, language learning. We have students learning language online. We have students learning language through badging. There's different ways to do this, it just doesn't have to be all seat time. And I think that that's the opportunity that we have to have those conversations with headmasters. And believe me, I know some of these people, I don't know them all, obviously, haven't been in the district for a long time, but there's a lot of great ideas that are there. And I think part of it is, is to bring, bring us all together because at least from what I read, 30% of kids are transferring from school to school to school. And if kids are transferring from one high school to another and there's different requirements, it's really creating dissonance in terms of kids being able to graduate. So that's another concern that I think we need to look at and, and work on it as a district. Again, this is not a mandate. This is something that needs to be done with voice, with ownership, with discussions. And it would prob, and it definitely would require some kind of support from others, not just, you know, myself.
So speaking of support from others, I, I've just talked about something that you've mentioned a number of times today. The other, I was surprised you didn't mention when you were earlier talking about three things, kind of lessons learned from Randolph, applicability here. You talked about your relationship with the town manager, you didn't talk about the relationship with your school committee.
Yeah.
So could you talk about that for a little bit and lessons learned and, and what would you see different in this role?
Definitely. My lessons learned from working with the Randolph School Committee was that, quite honestly, it was, it was a, it was a divided committee. And while I could work with members, it was important to make sure that I was honest, forthright, deliberate with everybody, make sure that everybody got the same information, make sure that you have the conversations and that, that you work with all committee members. You know, when you look at the fact that there's differences of opinions and different perspectives, that's natural. That's the way the world works and, and not everybody, not everybody, not our committee and Cathedral, not everybody's always on the same page on everything. It's about making sure that you listen, that you learn and that you build those relationships to be able to get across some of the things that are important to you. So it's an important lesson and it's a good learning for me. It was something that was good learning for me.
Thank you, Dr. Santos. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. And Ms. Oliver Davila and I were looking at each other because every time we think of a great new question, somebody else takes it just before us. So we're working on the fly here. Ms. Oliver Davila.
That always happens, Mr. O'Neil always goes first, steals my questions. But dovetailing on this past question, if you could talk about what would be your standards to judge this committee on whether or not we are doing a good job?
To me, a committee, a, a school committee that is doing a good job is, is doing three things. One is, is holding the superintendent accountable. And, and that's important because what I say and do needs to be vetted through the school committee and supported. And I think that that's really important and that's something that I would welcome from each and every one of you. I mentioned this in one of my interviews, when going through this process, is one of my favorite quotes is, feedback is the breakfast of champions. And, and I need that feedback because I, I miss blind spots, everybody does, so that's important, number one. Number two, that we're forthright and honest with each other about the challenges that are there and that we take them on and that we discuss them and that we look at options and that we say, here's one, here's two, and this is what we're trying to accomplish. And that we're thought partners. And to me, a, an effective committee also works on goals. It's, is that the goals that we've created and that our meetings, our school committee meetings are to discuss how we're doing and implementing those goals, the challenges, the opportunities, and that we're forward and direct with the community and that we speak with one voice. One of the things that I think is critical as I come into this role is, is building teams. One of my teams, my key teams would be you, the school committee. Another key team would be the central offices, the mayor. But it's having a team that we can communicate and, and work together towards that common goal of decreasing and eliminating that achievement gap and then talking about some of the ways that we can get there and how we support each other.
Thank you. And my other question is, when we look at education today and how rapidly things are changing, if you could talk about, because I, I can tell you do a lot of research and a lot of reading, can you talk about a recent trend across the country that you find very exciting that you would be looking at in terms of bringing to the district?
In terms of instruction, to me, and this may, I may be dating myself, but what, what I love most about learning and teaching, and I really believe this, it's, it's the most critical aspect. It's the relationship building of getting to know the students. We can talk about technology and we can talk about the Google Classroom and we can also talk about experiential education, which is really my passion and I'll talk a little bit about that. But before you get to the experiential education and those amazing pieces, it's really getting to know your students. When you know them and you respect them and you care them and they know that you're having that dialogical, this person believes in me and I believe in them, that's the beginning. In terms of where I see education going, Ms. Davila, is, is that I've created a, a model that I'm working with, with Northeastern, which is called the Applied Learning Framework. And it's workshop instruction. The only difference with workshop is, is that kids now have to be outside of the classroom and do experiences. So it's content and skills which kids learn in the classroom, which we all know, that's wonderful, slope index formula or whatever it is. But that kids have a experience where they go do something somewhere to, to badge that learning and that they're able to reflect on it and do it. And to me, that's a workforce skill. That's something that you can really build kids' brands and give them the, the skills. We talked a little bit about the fact that we had some of our kids building out the branding strategy for the school. We have students working with Tom DeVesto who are creating speakers, Bluetooth speakers. They're called the Social Innovators Club. We had a bunch of people last year, students. I co-taught the class with a gentleman, which was starting a, a business, it's called One Mighty Mill, from ideation all the way to innovation to production. It's a, it's a great mill that is in, in Lynn. And the students were part of the, looking at the economics of it, the branding, the scope of work and the challenges in terms of the market assessment. Those are wonderful things that I, I think are wonderful for kids to learn and to be able to do. So that to me is, is experiential, but it's built on the classroom. So what you're doing is you're building the academic skills with the content and then you're able to produce it. So to me, it's almost like workshop at the next level, but it's workshop in the community.
And that's something that you are creating now, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it with, with Northeastern University, what we're, Northeastern has just started a new program, it's called NXT, so it's experiential education. And we're the, we're, we're one of the founding schools. And part of my work is, is to help build out the model, but then also make sure that all of our teachers are trained in project-based learning. And we started this with Dell and then we took it to Northeastern because Dell does some of this work, but, but we needed to do this at, at a university level, which is really exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. We have a few more moments for additional member questions, so I'm gonna ask Dr. Rivera, who I know has a question, and then we'll go to Ms. Robinson.
So, Dr. Santos, you've talked a little, a little bit about like the overall challenges you faced as a superintendent, some of your, your work in Randolph. But I, I wondered if you could share like one specific mistake that you made as an education leader that you managed to rectify or apologize for?
Yeah, mistakes are...
Unlike a president who doesn't apologize for mistakes.
No. I, I make a lot of mistakes. So one of the mistakes that, that I made, and actually two, I'll give you one that I wish I would have done a little differently in Randolph. When the state gave us the list of 24 or 26 things that we needed to fix, I, I forgot how many they were, I was in like, let's go fix all of them. That was a mistake. I, I should have pushed back a little bit and said to the state, yeah, I understand we got all these problems, but let me just get people some psychological safety so that we can build this out and, and work on it. So that, that was a mistake that I made. And I still believe it's the right work to do, but it should have just pushed back a little bit on the state and said, we need a little bit of time. Another mistake that, that I made was at Cathedral, and this was a budgetary mistake. We had a program that I thought worked really well and it was a, it was like an early college like video class, but we didn't have that many students, so we didn't have partnership like video class, but we didn't have that many students, so we didn't have partnership and that, that hurt some students because they weren't able to take some AP classes. And that really, that really bothered me because students needed some of those classes because they were further ahead. So that's something that I apologized for and needed to do a little bit better in terms of supporting students. And as a principal at Boston International, we, I don't know if this was necessarily a mistake, but it is something that probably I should have thought differently about. We, we had this idea of making sure that all kids had a project or something that they built to, to be done with their end of quarter. It was kind of like a portfolio. And truly, and this is my fault, knowing all the research on English language learners and time and certain things like that, I tried to push it a little bit too fast. And the teachers were good and, and we then made it half a year and end of year versus every quarter. So yes, I make a lot of mistakes, Lorna. And, and I have no problem apologizing for them because that's, that's part of how you learn.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Ms. Robinson.
Thanks. I know that a lot of your own work has been more in the middle to high school.
Yeah.
To range, and I have a question about sort of early elementary. So we have very strong early childhood program that goes pre-K to grade two.
Yeah.
And then in the fourth grade, there are many options with regard to advanced work and excellence for all. My question is about the third grade.
Yeah.
Third grade is an area where that's the year kids are taking the Terranova and other things that can, you know, start putting them on a trajectory. But right now, it's not clear whether third grade is part of early childhood or, or middle grades. How would you create sort of a seamless pathway from pre-K to fifth grade so that there is clarity around what parents should expect at each grade level and how we can make sure all of our kids are getting the best source of education possible?
Ms. Robinson, I'm glad you asked that question. One of the things that I'm really proud of is, is when, when I arrived in Randolph, our four elementary schools were really hurting. And part of it was that when we were level four, many of our elementary schools were, I, I spent most of my time with the elementary schools, working with them. And I can tell you this, that by the time, three years out, all of our third graders were reading at the state level. And part of that was because we started that early literacy work. Our fourth and fifth graders, our student growth profiles went from like twenty, I know this for fifth grade, twenty-seven to fifty-seven, and from fourth grade from twenty-eight to forty-one. And part of that was because we were really intentional about regrouping and supporting students. And, and you're so right about third grade, it's kids are learning to read and then they're reading to learn. And, and that's a critical piece, that, that early literacy is, is so critical. We did use ANET to help give us a sense of where kids were, to look at the, the reading power standards, which I thought was really helpful. At the time, we didn't have a fully realized curriculum, so we needed to put something in. And I personally am a, very much a, a big fan of supportive literacy with, with phonemic awareness, the PALS and certain things, so, and I got a lot of that from my, my background in linguistics. But in terms of looking at early literacy, that's the key because if you build those foundations early on, those gaps don't widen as the kids go higher up in grades. You know, third grade is, is one of the, the big indicators, eighth grade again with mathematics, but it's really looking at that system-wide approach. And I may be dating myself, but one of the things that I, I thought we did well in Boston was we had the cluster system. And within the clusters, we, we had the K-12 approach. And when we had the K-12 approach, it was great because, you know, our supervisor was, she was excellent. She was so into literacy that we would have that conversation, some of our PD was centered around looking at literacy for all of our students, you know, Alfred Tatum's work on having black boys read and how do you make reading accessible at the younger ages. So those are some of the things that, that we looked at for a K-12 approach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Dr. Santos, two topics we haven't talked too much about today that I'm actually going to combine into one. And we, we talked briefly about parental involvement at the beginning, but we haven't talked about it in depth. And the other thing, we talked briefly, but Build BPS is a big issue in our district, right? With the mayor's support, with the Mass State Building Authority's support, we're going to be spending over a billion dollars in our buildings. And that's not building, that's not, not building new schools, but it's also renovating some, it's putting twenty-first century furniture and equipment in our schools, so on and so forth. But a key piece in that is grade configuration. So right now, we have about twenty-three grade configurations. We're moving gently away from a three-step model to more of a two-step. So we're, we're slowly, we have less and less middle schools in Boston, and we've had a portfolio approach, we decided to take a portfolio approach of having a mix of K-6, 7, and 12s, and K-8, 9 to 12s. Parents have a lot of thoughts about that. They have a lot of concerns about what buildings we're building, which ones we're not, what the process is, if they feel they're included. I, I'm interested in how you see the intersection of that because it is a big challenge in Boston, right? With a hundred twenty-eight school buildings.
Yep.
Trying to decide which ones get the next level of investment, which ones move, how we do swing space, so on and so forth. But ensuring parental and community involvement in the process, how would you tackle such a big project as Build BPS? And how do you ensure parental and, Ms. Race has already talked about student voice, but how would you ensure parental and community voice in the process?
That's a great opportunity. That was, when I did my SWOT analysis, I viewed it as one of the opportunities. And I think the reason why I view it as an opportunity is because you, we have an opportunity to create an engagement index, to really have conversations with families about what we want our schools and our community to look like, and let's be forefronting. And part of that is, is to obviously be aspirational and visionary about some of those things, which is some of the fun work. But then it's also about being tactical and saying, in order to get here, here's what we need to do. It's like doing a remodel of your home or, or certain things. It's, we can't remodel somebody's house and then just say, don't come back and here you go, here's your new house. It's including people. It's having voice and ownership. It's making sure that when you build out these programs, that there's also an academic framework. That if we're looking, whether it's a workshop base, whether it's an applied learning framework, we have to be clear and concise with families, here's what it's going to, what it's going to look like for your kids. Here are the benefits. Here's why we have to go through this process. And that, to me, is important because while people may not agree with everything, it's the fact that they have voice and that you own it together. So to me, it's really about getting out into the communities, it's looking at the needs of the district, it's looking at connecting this, not just with the Build BPS, but Build BPS human capital. Build the teacher's capital, build the student's capital. This is Build BPS beyond. To me, it would be Build BPS for Boston. And part of it is, is that you're looking at how do you arrange some of these schools that need to be K-6? That's going to be difficult for some families and you have to be able to have those honest conversations about how does this disrupt you? What year, how do we do this? Because people need time. And you cannot just say, here's what we're doing and it's happening today. So I do believe that there needs to be an engagement index. I think there needs to be an implementation plan, there needs to be directives and times to make sure that there's awareness of how these things are going to happen. It needs to be done with different languages and different voices. So there, it's, it's about messaging and supporting and being able to take some of the lumps. And I know that I would, if I'm the person in this role, that I would take some of the lumps, but it would be that we would all work together, knowing that we're doing the right thing in the best interest of students. And always keeping that at the forefront, that when we're making these decisions, we're doing them for the right reasons. And to be able to articulate those in a real, clear, and concise manner. And we will take some hits. I understand that, but, but it would be the right thing to do. So again, an engagement index, a way to include so that it's not just being done to them, something that's being owned.
Do you have a demonstrated example from your past when you've tackled a large, challenging project such as this and, and how you have actually done something like that?
The, the largest, and again, this is a mini-scale in this regard, the, two things that, that we did, one is small, but I'm really proud of this one. We had an alternative program in Randolph that for six years had never graduated one student. And what I needed to do was, quite honestly, explain that that program could no longer exist. So I knew what I had to do. If it came in and says, Oscar says you can't do this and here it is, it becomes my fault. So we brought in a consultant to have a conversation with us, do some interviews, discuss these things with the kids. Why did the program not work? It was not relational, there were no stopgaps in place, the parents were not involved. So I said, okay, here's what we can learn from this. When we create this program, let's make sure that we have a strong program that identifies some of the things that were not working. I can tell you that this may not ever show up anywhere, but one of my proudest moments was when those students from the alternative program all graduated. And part of that was because we had the Director of Family and Community Engagement working with the families. We had, we did staff that were willing to be a part of this program. We did the training and cooperative discipline. We worked with Rockport to make sure that the kids had internships. So it was a really strategic and what I would say focused approach because I knew that we were on the line and we had to do it well because these were our most marginalized students. So that's a small example. Again, this one was a, the other example I can give you, which I think worked out really nicely, was our Applied Learning Center at Cathedral, where we did it with the students, with the families. We did have some teachers who were concerned about what does this new learning look like, but we knew that we had time, so we built their capacity, their human capital capacity, so that when the building was done, they were ready. So those are a few examples, minor, not at that scale, but I would, I would still follow the same process.
But there were lessons learned from them.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you, Dr. Santos.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. I do want to go around one more time to see if there are any questions remaining. Very good. We have covered a lot of ground today and I thank you for your, your time with us. I do want to leave the few remaining moments for you to give us a closing statement and then we'll talk to the rest of the community here about what are the next steps.
So first of all, thank you so much for your questions and I've, I've enjoyed our discussion. A couple of things that I want you to know is, is that I love this city, I grew up in this city. I was educated in the Boston Public Schools. I was a teacher in Boston, I was a principal in Boston. I understand Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan, Austin, Rosendale, Brighton, East Boston. I understand this city. I grew up in this city, I have friends in this city, I have family in this city. I have nephews, nieces who are in the Boston Public Schools. I understand how important this job is, I understand the hard work that lies ahead, and I want you to know that I am one hundred percent committed to doing this work. I don't view this as a stepping stone. I don't view this as something that I'm going to do for a couple of years. This is the work that I have spent my whole life wanting to do and am one hundred percent focused on doing because our city deserves it. The reason why I'm here today is because I had a great education, I had great teachers, I had great friends who've helped me have a better life. And I will do everything I can in my power to make sure that there's one Boston, one focus, and truly great schools for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you once again, Dr. Santos. I want to let folks know that concludes the school committee portion of interviews for this week with our three finalists. At the conclusion of this interview, Dr. Santos will head out to the Mildred Avenue, K-8 in Mattapan for a student and teacher interview panel that will convene at four o'clock today. And he will be then back here at the Balling Building for a six-thirty PM interview with parents and school leaders. And that parent and school leader panel will be televised here and livestreamed on Boston's City TV just as this interview is done, has been done today. We, of course, acknowledge that that's a very hectic schedule. I think you're through, what is it, maybe five hours of interviews at this point, you've only got another three to go. But nonetheless, you know, as we've told the other candidates, this is emblematic of a typical day in the life of a superintendent in Boston and the wealth of people that are invested in this, in this district. That's right, it is probably a short day, Mr. O'Neil. My wife wonders on Wednesday nights when I get home at eight o'clock, like, what are you doing? You know, like you're not supposed to be home for another three hours. But nevertheless, I do want to remind our audience that those viewing these interviews can certainly send their feedback to us in a number of ways. You can first learn more about the candidates and their backgrounds at bostonpublicschools.org/superintendentsearch. You can also email us at superintendentsearch@bostonpublicschools.org. And finally, something new this year, we wanted to try to collect information from the public in a more coordinated way, and so we've developed a survey for public feedback that's also available on our website, the bostonpublicschools.org/superintendentsearch. That survey will stay live until Sunday night, April twenty-eighth, and then all of the results will be shared with the school committee for review in advance of our anticipated vote, which is tentatively been scheduled for next Wednesday, May first. So without further ado, if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public interview. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second? And that sounds like a second for Mr. Tron and unanimous consent. We are now adjourned and thank you again, Dr. Santos. Good luck with the rest of the day.
Thank you.